Call to order the City Council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 is now five o'clock. The executive system, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn and quorum, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You were right Clarence Vedder.
An open forum, an opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the City Council on items that aren't on the agenda, please come to the podium to do so. Seeing none, approval of minutes for the May 2nd regular meeting and May 9th work session.
Move.
Moved by Grassel.
Second.
Seconded by Riepel. Any questions? Roll call place.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lettings, none. Scheduled public hearings. Number three, public hearing on a proposed 2015 assessment job. Number two, paving. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move.
Moved by Grassel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vedder. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Emery.
Good evening everyone. My name is Steve Emery. I'm with Seth Smith, Nolting Engineering. Again, this is the improvement hearing for the concrete paving of Brandon Boulevard, Nate Circle, and also Crystal Circle within the replat of Point of Woods 5th Edition and Point of Woods 6th Edition. The project scope basically entails removal of the aggregate surfacing, any miscellaneous curb and gutter repairs, any drainage issues we'd have out there right now, and then concrete paving of the street. The project costs to be assessed are based on a front footage, or a front footage of the lot. The one document that I handed out to you basically states that the front footage of a lot is the average width of the narrowest dimension of a lot, and that for a rectangular lot, it is simply an average of the dimension of the front and the back end of the lot. So if your front end of your lot and the end of your lot aren't exactly the same dimension, you basically take an average of those two. The second page that I handed out for you is how the assessments for the cul-de-sacs were determined. And essentially what we did there is, you see in that example, is you take a front cord dimension, so you can kind of see the 51.31 foot dimension. We then go back 140 feet. We take the cord distance there. So in this case, 119.84 feet. So you take the 119.84 plus the 51.31 to come up with a total dimension of 85.58 feet. So again, that's how the front footage within those cul-de-sac lots was determined. The total project cost that we are looking at for the street improvements on the, again, Brandon Boulevard, Nate Circle, and Crystal Circle, the total project cost at this point is estimated at $441,709. Of that, $427,585.98 is what's being assessed. The salvaging of the aggregate surfacing, that project cost will not be assessed. The city's going to get that product at the end, so we have taken all the cost to remove that aggregate, so. So based on that, what we are looking at is an estimated assessment rate of $189.69 per lineal foot. Yep, I'm sorry. $189, $180.69 per front foot and $60.23 per end benefit. Again, the one map that I handed out, I think you all received it with your notice, basically identifies the properties along Brandon Boulevard will be receiving a front-end benefit, and the properties in the two cul-de-sacs would be Nate Circle and Crystal Circle. They're receiving a front benefit and an end benefit. The end benefit is one-third the cost of the front benefit cost. So in this case, again, the front being the 180.69 and the end benefit being $60.23. These assessments are typically paid over a 20-year timeframe. They can be prepaid at any time, but otherwise, if they are not prepaid, they're essentially filed with the county, and when you just pay your normal taxes, your assessments would be paid at that time. On an assessment project, just kind of want to point out, we are following Chapter 429 statutes and all the requirements that are required of that. The first of those was the report of feasibility, which we did do, which identified the assessable properties, identified the project cost, and what the estimated assessment rates are at this time. The second step is basically the improvement hearing, again, which is where we're at right now. Third step, if the council desires, they would order us to proceed with preparation of plans and specifications. We would then prepare the plan specifications, get the project out for bid. Once we get bids and we actually have actual numbers to work with, at that point, the council can either decide to award the project, to move ahead with the project, or we can decide to, prior to awarding the bid, they may opt to hold the final assessment hearing. So I guess at this point, those steps have not yet been determined, but there is a potential that we would hold the final assessment hearing prior to awarding the project, too. So I think with that, we'll probably just open it up for any, I guess, questions that you have.
If you do have any questions, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, please, for the record, since it is a public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Counsel, Mr. Holstead, Mr. Emery. As you know, I'm Gerard Neal. I'm a resident of East Grand Forks, Minnesota, 1838 20th Street Northwest, and I'm also an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Minnesota, and I'm here representing Bob Peabody in Point of Woods. I've had a very limited opportunity to discuss the matter with Mr. Peabody. I cannot tell, and the comments made here today with respect to where they were in the hearing process for ordering either the project or the special assessments. In the limited time that I've had to look at the assessments as well as discuss this with Mr. Peabody, the manner that it's being represented today, or at least the information that was given out approximately three to four weeks ago with the property to be assessed, and I understand that has not been determined, but it is substantially different than what was represented last fall. So there are several end benefits for Laurel Avenue that are not included in this project, and there's also several other pieces of property that are on Brandon Avenue that are also not included. And I am here today to provide a letter to make it very clear that if there is going to be an assessment as identified in the roll, or at least the information that was provided for the hearing today, that my client will object to it, and I think there's other people here today that will object to it as well. Everyone is in favor of the project to have the street improvement done. It's a matter of who's going to get assessed and how they're going to get assessed. When you look at some of the properties, they're looking at, by the time you get the curb and gutter, sewer, sanitary, water main, you look at the assessment from last year or 2015, some of those lots could be hit for $70,000. And there is comparisons to other projects in the city when the assessments are done that are done differently. They don't result in that kind of an assessment. If you look at other projects, they're doing twice, twice the footage, four times the lots, and it's not one and a half times what the projected costs are here today. And maybe some of you are thinking that it might be, you know, jumping to conclusions and maybe the estimates are going to be higher than what you're going to see on the bids. But when you look at, when you look at the way it's being done, there are only a handful of lots that are being assessed when there's many other properties that will be benefited. If you also look at the cost that is estimated for the project, I don't know if the project's cost has exceeded one and a half times what they were just a year or two ago. And I think it's also been represented, at least there's been some people that have been told that maybe some prior assessments were not done correctly. And if that's the case, then we're going to look into it, and maybe there should be reassessed so that it's fair to everybody. I think as a city, whether we follow the law or if we didn't follow the law, I guess it's probably more important that we get things right, and if mistakes were made, or if errors were made, or if there was some other property, let's try to work it through and get it done correctly. I'm not saying that things have been done wrong, but Bob, as pretty much most of you know, is very keen on the special assessments, and health reasons is why he's not here today. So I'm just asking, is that be, that it will be looked at as far as the special assessments, and when you take a look at some of the end benefits are not being passed around, that will be challenged. So that's what I'm here for. I'm not here to screw things up for putting the paving in. I'm only here basically to protect my clients' rights, and I had a letter to the council and to Mr. Murphy, objecting to the manner in which the special assessments would be made, if they're going to be made according to what was most recently handed out, because that's not what was given out last fall. The council have any questions?
I do have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Neal.
Sure.
Um, when you reference a project that was done a year and a year and a half ago, what project are you referencing to that so that we know what you're talking about on that matter?
Okay.
Because if you're talking about something that goes back to 2012, I don't know. I want, I'd like to know what you're talking about, what project number it is. So we can take a look at it.
I don't have a project number off the cuff. It'd be a 2015 project, when you have a 12-inch water main. What's a 12-inch water main going into servicing a Brandon Road? 8-inch water main or a 6-inch water main? I mean, that's just one of, that's just one of the examples. My home, built in 91, 92, and I think most homes have a 1-inch water main going in, I can't imagine 268 feet of a 12-inch main servicing part of Brandon Avenue. To me, that seems excessive. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm not an engineer. Yes?
I would like to point out that, again, that 12-inch water main was installed along Reinhardt Drive. That project cost for that 12-inch water main was never assessed. That cost was picked up directly by Water and Light.
Then what you might want to do when you do your assessments like that have been done in years past, instead of putting miscellaneous assessments or a lump sum principle and a lump sum interest, you may want to go back in and go curb and gutter, street lighting, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer, because the people that I've been talking to that get their assessments and their tax statements this year are showing a lump sum, so they're not able to compare what they're doing. What they have been doing, though, is going back in and looking at the assessment role for which they believe they're getting property tax statements for this year, and they do include 272 feet, or 68 feet somewhere in that area, of a 12-inch main, an 8-inch main, and a 6-inch main, and when they do the math, they feel that that's included in their project for Brandon Avenue. So maybe they're not correct, but in order for clarity, it might be best if you itemize out each one, because they have been in the past, project number in a lot of cases, and then they are, they do also give the, exactly what it is.
The other thing I will add is, I think what the developer is referring to is, we did look at the option. The option of doing the end benefits along Laurel Drive was looked at. It was one of the options in the report of feasibility. The council did decide that we would go with option one, which did not include any of the end benefits along Laurel Drive, but again, that was looked into.
It, when, what was provided with the material showed, it does show option number one, but the one last year that was given out is this one here, and that one shows the preliminary. That also is a color-coded map that has the end benefits going along Laurel Avenue, and this is what Bob understands, Mr. Peabody understands, is what was going to be used today.
I know there was many discussions regarding that from Mr. Peabody, regarding the end benefits of his request.
Yep.
And that was discussed, I think, at length. It wasn't something that we said we were going to do. It was something that Mr. Peabody came in and requested that that be done.
That the end benefits not be done?
No, that was, two, Mr. Peabody wanted the end benefits for Laurel Drive to be done.
Right.
We did not say we were going to do that to begin with. His request came in that way.
Yes.
Okay. So just so you know that we didn't say we are going to do this, and then went back on our word. I just want to make sure that's clear, that we never agreed or said or agreed with him last year that we would do the end benefits as he requested, because we had to go back and look at it, and I'm sure Mr. Emery worked with him to put stuff together, make, to see what it looked like to show the end benefits.
I think-
But as a council and a city, we did not say, yes, Mr. Peabody, that's what we're doing.
I think it's going to come as a surprise to him that that was not included, because when he sold the lots and when he does his calculations, he anticipated those end benefits would be included. Otherwise, you would result in $50,000 to $70,000 in special assessments for all of the concrete, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water lines going into that subdivision.
Well, you made a comment that we should do things right, so not regarding any legalities. So the right thing we should do is go back to what Laurel Drive paid for, and then tack on end benefits to everybody in Brandon and all the cul-de-sacs, if you're looking at doing things right.
It's either that or you just block off that access, then put a gate there, and you don't have that access, because if you're going to, people that benefit from it, it is every, as I'm sure you're aware of, it's not whether you use it or not, it's whether you have access or not. And there was a lot that was going all the way, that was going to cover through Laurel Drive, and that lot got split with an easement going through on Brandon. That's just what I, looking at what I've seen. So it has to be consistent, and I know you're aware of, when you hit $45,000 in special assessments in lots in the city, they don't sell. And we don't want that here, because the city is not in the business of selling lots, and that's what's going to happen if you have $50,000 to $75,000 in specials on lots. They're not going to sell.
To be consistent, if I may, to be consistent, there were no end benefits on Laurel Drive.
That's right.
So to be consistent here, we should not have end benefits.
The people on Laurel Drive can certainly use Brandon just as much as they can Laurel-
I understand that, but you were asking for consistency. There were no end benefits on Laurel Drive when we put the road in there, so to be consistent, we should not have end benefits here when we're putting the road in then either.
And you'd only go in halfway if you're going to follow your protocol. If you're going to do it, you need to be, you need to be fair as well. And fairness, fairness is not always equal. Equal is not always fair.
I agree.
Yes, and you need, but you can't be putting $50,000 to $75,000 of specials on a lot. We already have that problem from the flood.
What's the highest specials on this project, on one particular lot? What would be the highest?
Well, you can take Lot 1 in the corner.
On the paving, Clarence?
On the paving, yes.
Mr. Neal, we're not, we're not, you know, saying that we don't understand and that we're not looking at that, and we know what the costs are. We're not, you know, going, okay, we don't really want to hear it from anybody. We understand that. And I know that looking at something, and you're looking at a new development in what it costs to put the roads in, and the water mains, and the sewers, and the curb and gutter, we know it's expensive. And that's something that we're well aware of, that we want to make sure that we continue to grow. That's not the issue. His issue is that when we looked at this, as Mr. Vedder said, consistency of what, any new development down there. It's not that we're not looking at it. It's something that we never said last year we were doing that. I'm not arguing what was said and not said, but we did not say last year that we'd allow and say, yeah, go ahead and do end benefits, because I want to make sure that's clear that we're not going back on our word. We're not going back on what we said. So I don't want that out there saying that, well, the city said this thing, and all of a sudden, we're going back on it, so. Go ahead, Mr. Emery.
And I did find out again, when the report of feasibility was, we gave a roll this year. Okay. We looked at three different options. Option number two, exactly what Mr. Peabody looked at, benefits of Laurel Boulevard, presented in the report of feasibility. So we did look at that option.
Okay, and was that provided to the people that were affected out there? Yes. I mean-
It was two, like, set up certain, like, it was set up last year. Could be it was, for how many options I ever received. It was, I picked up certified on there last year. It was, it was in there, and, but it's been also built since then. I don't know if there was a lot at that point, or if it was.
Yeah. When I talked to Mr. Peabody, I'm not saying that he said it was included. It was his understanding that it was going to be included. As far as the feasibility study, to my knowledge, he did not receive anything like that at all. I don't think, I don't, did you talk to Mr. Peabody about the different options?
I did not talk specifically to Mr. Peabody about the options.
Yeah, because I don't, because I don't think that he is aware of them, and it does make a big difference.
I will say, I did talk to Mr. Peabody. He called me personally and asked me about what was going on, and I explained to him that there was more than one option that they were, they were pursuing.
And the options were presented at a work session, so it was public information.
Okay, so there was no, actually no notice given, you did, Mr. Holstead, you did talk to Mr. Peabody, but nothing was ever communicated with him, because I think you're aware that special assessments are kind of near and dear to his heart.
Mr. Murphy? Thank you. I guess I can shed a little bit of light on this, hopefully. I did have a conversation with Mr. Peabody last fall when some of this was going on, and if you remember correctly, one of the things that was brought forward, that the end benefits on Laurel Drive was brought forward as a specific request from Mr. Peabody. He requested that that be added on to that. What was conveyed to Mr. Peabody then at the meeting at that last, in last fall, was that if, if he could provide assessment and appeal waivers from the property owners that were out there along Laurel Drive and Brandon Boulevard, and that, that the council then would look at doing that. What Mr. Peabody did bring in this particular year was, it was not an assessment, appeal waiver, but he did bring in a signed petition from, I believe, I have to look at, but I believe it was everybody in Brandon Boulevard and Nate Circle. He owns the majority of them yet, but he had three of, excuse me, five of the eight on Laurel Boulevard. And one thing that was brought forward to the council's attention at that point was is that that was a petition. It was not an assessment and appeal waiver, and that, just because the petition was signed, that the property owners could still object and appeal those assessments. As we show here today, I believe several of the people that, that had signed the petition for, for this portion have also turned in assessment and appeal waivers, excuse me, turned in objections here tonight.
Anybody else have anything?
The question was raised, what's the highest assessment that would go? You probably had your finger on it.
The highest, the highest one actually, I'm just going to correct, Sarah, was actually
Right around $30,000.
That's just the paving of the street. That does not include everything else. Yes.
One on that, $30,004, $30,000.
Oh, you're going to correct me?
There's, there's three.
Well, yep. You're correct, Travis. It is $30,442.73. Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Neal?
The only thing I'd like to do, and it's, I just want to make sure, because like when I read your, when I read the notice today, I could not tell exactly if this was the assessment role. This was the project. It was, I was told that there was bids that were going to be opened up today. What I would like to do is just to preserve any kind of an appeal, if I may, give you, just give you a letter to you, Mr. Holstead, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Holstead. I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure that, that they're, they are protected, so that they do have their options under the law. Is that, is that appropriate?
Sounds good, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If I'm not mistaken, and I think the objection is supposed to be supplied at the, at the next hearing to preserve, just, just by statute.
Well, it's either at or, it's either at or before, the way I read the statute, the 48.29, but if you want to wait till the hearing, that's fine, but.
We're going to work really hard then with our engineer and with our legal counsel-
Thank you, sir.
-to get this project done in a way that's fair and legal for everybody. It's a good process. You know, when you're in the middle of it, it gets a little bit tangled up, but it's a good process, and when it's done, we'll have a good street going through there, and hopefully in a way that everybody can live with.
Anybody else in the, like to speak at all? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Travis Plowski. I live at 521 Brandon Boulevard. All I'm going to ask for is, let's try to get the street done this year. Let's try to get some bids on it, but what we, I think with this kind of dollar amount, I guess I don't want the city just to get the bids back and say yes or no on it. Let's have a public hearing on it before, before that's let out, you know, so we have some input on it. You know, this is $30,000 on a lot of these lots. You know, there, there should be some kind of public hearing on it before it's, it's okayed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any comments?
Hello, my name's Greg Maher, resident 1429 Nate Circle. My objection would be the 161 feet that does come off Laurel Drive, which we kind of touched before. I know I just read the minutes of the 11th with Steve Emery, and he said it's kind of the city's policy for the corner lots to have end benefits, but now all of a sudden, they're not getting assessed with an end benefit. I don't know what the special case was, why they didn't get an end benefit, but now we're being, you know, somebody has to pay for it, so now we're being assessed with that end benefit. It's probably about 15 to 20% off our specials. I know I talked with Steve Emery. The first set of specials, the water, the sewer, the curb, the Point of Woods 5th Edition was assessed that, which why were we assessed that in the first place? I mean, kind of what he said, if we're going to do end benefits, let's do end benefits or let's not do end benefits. So my objection would just be that 161 feet that come off Laurel Drive.
Just for clarify, are you talking about from Laurel Drive?
On Brandon Boulevard.
Yeah, pass Brandon Boulevard till where Point of Woods 5th starts.
I'd be, where the points, I believe, would be Lot A and G, it's 161 feet.
Okay.
That come off Laurel Drive.
You're talking right here.
Correct, yes.
Yep, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
You know, 15, 20%, and I know my first set was $19,000, so if you took 15 to 20% off of that, and then now I'm going to be hit with roughly $26,000, you take 15 to 20% off that, we're getting pretty reasonable, you know? So that's my concern, and I think we're putting it all on, I mean, so let's separate it to what's, like you said, the city policy is, not what's a unique situation.
Question for you, do you happen to recall, what were your specials for curb, gutter, sewer, water? Do you remember what the first wave was?
Roughly $19,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments?
Hi, I'm Tiffany Foss of 627 Brandon Boulevard. I purchased my lot on October 10th of 2016. Apparently, there was a city council meeting on October 4th of 2016 to approve the curb and gutter assessment role. I was unaware of that, so when I purchased my lot, I figured I had a $300 property tax. I was unaware of that, so when I purchased my lot, I figured I had a $300 property tax, to only find out that I got slammed with a $32,000 property tax special assessment for the 2017 year. I was not notified that that assessment rule went through because of the timing, obviously, but there's got to be something that should have, somebody should have sent me something saying that there was $32,000 in curb and gutter, because I would have appealed that at that point, because that is absolutely ridiculous. I do feel that there was still a mistake in how that curb and gutter was done. Mr. Emery said that there's.
Tiffany, I'm going to correct you. Your $32,000 assessment is for the curb and gutter, the water main, the sanitary sewer, and the storm sewer. It's not just for the curb and gutter.
Right, okay. I apologize. But still, regardless, way too much. Mr. Emery said that the 12-inch was covered by the Water and Light Department. I received what the bids were from Mr. Murphy, and the bids from Zaverell's, which who you say you went with, was $244,000, and we were assessed $247,000.
That's correct. You got to, you got to remember that you got a total project, or you got a construction cost, but then you got the costs for all of the soft costs for engineering, administration, all of that stuff. So that's included into that.
Okay, but still, anyway, that's $200 some dollars a foot, when nobody else in the city has paid that much for curb, gutter, water, sewer, et cetera. And now you want to tack on another $22,000 in paving, so I'm going to have $55,000 in specials before I even have my lot. And the lots behind me that are the exact same are being valued at $41,000 and have their streets in curb and gutters. There's a disconnect somewhere, and we need to figure it out. We're not opposed to having the project done. Obviously, we want nice streets. We want to be able to use them. We all have kids. We're tired of the mess. But unless that street's going to have heated streets where it's not going to have snow on it, then I don't know how you can justify these different specials, because the person across the street from me is not paying anywhere near that, and it's the exact same thing. Right?
I'd have to see the numbers, right? You know, to really know, I'd have to look at all the numbers, year of construction, of everything, and.
I understand there's inflation and cost increase, but not that much over the course of a year to three years?
And we did, council this year aware of it, on that 2015 project, again, we did receive five bids on that project, so we did have very competitive bids. Unfortunately, I mean, things that we cannot control are material costs, fuel costs, other incidentals like that. So, again, when you receive five bids, all competitive bids, you know, that's the going rate, and that's where the project costs are.
But then I also think it's the council's responsibility to look at those bids and say, even though this is the lowest one, what is this going to do to the taxpayers there? Even though it's the lowest bid, it might not be the best bid at that time. Just because it's low doesn't mean we need to go for it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Emery, back when we looked at this last year, year before, or whatever it was, that we looked at bids and they were rejected, correct?
No, that was for the paving project in Point of Woods Fifth. Those bids were rejected. What Tiffany's referring to is the utilities in the street construction.
I know, but we have rejected the bids out there in that area due to the fact that they're.
For the paving.
Right.
Yep.
And so they were all too high.
And the other thing, we were being pushed by the developer to get the utilities and the street in there before fall, because he had sold one of the lots, and he needed to get those utilities in, so.
Okay, but then we're getting punished for that bad decision-making.
I wouldn't say you're getting punished, Tiffany. Again, we had five bids, good competitive bids. It was just, it's where the market was at.
Can you say it again? You bought your, you bought your lot when?
I would have purchased it October 10th of 2016.
And there was a bid letting, or there was on October 6th?
October 4th.
October 4th.
Actually, what was on October 4th is when that assessment rule was adopted by the city council.
So the seller, the developer, was very aware.
Correct.
Of the assessment.
So unfortunately.
So unfortunately, this happens a lot with us. We get upset people at us, because we're going through this process, and we're putting in, doing all of those pieces, and it really comes down to who's selling you, the developer. That's, that's the problem. So, that's all I can say. I mean, I agree with you. I'd be totally upset, too, but there, we didn't, we just went by what was put in front of us at that time.
Right, but who's looking out for that? That's my issue, is that on paper, that total probably looked good, and I said that to these gentlemen last week. The total probably looked good based on other projects, but when you divide out the feet and you divide out what's actually going on, it did not make sense. It did not make sense that a project three blocks away, triple the size, was less in cost.
And that project was done when?
2012.
2012.
Which is three years. Lots of things can happen in three years. Right. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to argue with you. I'm just saying, we're.
Inflation doesn't go up 162%. I mean, yes, there is inflation, but not that much.
You catch a moment where all the contractors are kind of hungry and they sharpen the pencil, and then other times where they're just swamped, and it does sort of go like that. So it isn't like a rampant inflation, but year by year, every year is a little different as to the, how competitive the bids are.
It hasn't happened at all in the city, anywhere. You look at any of them, they're all pretty comparable. There is not one that's here and there, and that's what we have going on in this development.
On a per-foot basis, Mr. Emery, for the work that we're talking about, what is the disparity? You know, are we dealing, some lots are huge, of course, and they will carry more specials. You know, 70-foot lot versus 110-foot lot, obviously, that's a big difference. But as for, like, per foot, what are we seeing on the area that she's talking about, curb gutter sewer water? Was it a much higher per front foot?
Well.
I think what she.
When we were assessed, it's almost $234 a foot, and that other one was $143 a foot. Oh, the Riverview 10th.
Yep, she's compared to the Riverview 10th. And unfortunately, I think what we got going on a little bit, too, is when you look at Riverview 10th, and just the way that those lots were configured, with basically kind of the circle you have in there, and just the assessable front footage you had there, you essentially had front footage on both sides. So you're, you know, if you put in 900 feet of water main, you had about 1,800 feet of assessable footage. When you look at Point of Woods Fifth and Sixth now, you do not have that case, because when we put in the water main on Brandon Boulevard, you really only have one side of assessable footage there, and same thing with the water main going into the cul-de-sacs. You just have the assessable footage within those cul-de-sacs. So again, really, it, it just comes down to how the lots are configured out there. Again, her, the total assessments compared to Riverview 10th are going to be significantly higher. Those lots out there are probably about an 80-foot width lot, where, you know, a lot of the lots in Point of Woods Fifth and Sixth were probably in that 120 to 125-foot lot. So, again, with assessments being based off of, you know, a linear footage, it's going to cost you a lot more, unfortunately.
But I wasn't talking about what the assessed footage is. I'm talking about the cost of footage, because I would understand, yes, if we had 1,200 feet of linear feet in five houses, and they had 1,200 feet at 20 houses, of course, I expect to pay more.
I understand that, Tiffany.
But the cost is different.
And I understand that, Tiffany, but again, you have to realize, the assessment cost is basically your total project cost divided by the assessable footage. And so what I'm getting in a Riverview 10th, with the configuration of those lots, we had a lot more assessable footage, which essentially drives down the cost per foot.
Well, regardless, between that special and the paving special, we can't have more specials than what it's going to increase our lot value by. Right? Is that correct when I read that?
That's, that's what, yeah, the special benefit test.
Are you talking about the special benefit test?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Murphy have something to add?
I just had, to say, but the thing that's of interest in the comparison of the 2012 Riverview project and the 2015 Point of Woods project is the fact that, for whatever reason, just the water main is the area that was significantly higher, and when you look across the five different bids, they were all really right in that same range. So for whatever reason, the water main portion, I don't know if it was piping or whatever, if it was just high that year or whatever, but the, all five of them came in significantly higher. Actually, what it shows here, what this was actually provided by Ms. Foss herself, it's 160% more than what it was in the 2012 Riverview. The remaining of the other portions, the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, street construction are anywhere from 37 to 56% higher versus the 160 on the water main, which comes to an overall roughly, say, 60% higher for the 2015 project versus the 2012 project. So, I guess we don't know exactly why it is, if, for whatever reason, they were, the water main was competitive that high across all five bids, just for your work.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the council this time during the public hearing? I see none. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing. Move. Second by Grassil, second by Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move, same sign. Motion carried. Public hearing is now closed. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Any council member like any items pulled, number four through 13? Not entertained a motion to have four through 13 approved? Move by Mr. Tweetin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Riappel. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged, received reports of officers, boards, and commissions. Number 14, regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, and Power and Building Commission for April 20th, 2017. Communication, there's none. Old business, there's none. New business, number 15, consider adoption resolution number 17-05-34 ordering the improvement and preparation of plans and specifications for 2015 assessment job number two, paving on Point of Woods Fifth and Sixth additions. Move. Minister Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Demers. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if we want to amend the resolution to include, put out for bid? I mean, do we need to have another step after you put the plans and specs together?
Actually, no. Once we get plans prepared, we will file them with you, and then we'll get authorization to advertise at that point and put it out for bid.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Grassil.
Anything on Travis's request, then? How does that work?
That's what the, this, the last assessment hearing will be a public hearing for them to discuss the project.
Any other questions? See none, roll call, please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 16, consider adoption resolution number 17-05-35, supporting the exploration of the implementation of quiet zone in the city of East Grand Forks without having to close any other crossings in the process. Move. Move by Grassil.
Second.
Second by Tweetin. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please. Want you to have something?
Tweetin?
I was just going to say that we did receive a phone call today. Mr. Powers truly regrets that he cannot be here tonight. He had wanted to be here to answer any questions you might have, but he is feeling ill, so I want you to be aware.
Megan?
Tweetin? Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
No.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 17, consider approving the request to declare a list of vehicles as surplus and to be sold at auction. Move. Move by Tweetin.
Sorry.
Second by Grassil. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 18, consider approving the following on sale weekday and Sunday liquor license applicant renewals. Eagles Club at 350, Eagles Club 350 located at 227 10th Street Northwest. Mike's Pizza located at 411 2nd Street Northwest. Valley Golf located at 2407 River Road Northwest. East Grand Forks Lane located at 1500 5th Avenue Northeast. Blue Moose located at 507 2nd Street Northwest. And Boardwalk Bar and Grill located at 415 2nd Street Northwest, Suite 2. Move. By Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 19, consider approving the on-sale wine and on-sale non-intoxicating liquor license applicant renewal for Tal Garden located at 302 Demers Avenue, East Grand Forks. Move. Move by Grassil.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 20, consider approving the following off-sale intoxicating liquor license applicant renewals. Pops Liquor located at 122 4th Street Northeast. Hugos Wine and Spirits located at 310 14th Street Northeast. Move. Move by Tweetin.
Second.
Second by Vedder. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?[1650.12]
Number 21, consider approving the following off sale non-intoxicating malt liquor license applicant renewals. Eastside Travel Plaza located at 607 Grand Gateway Drive Northeast. Shopco Hometown number 742 located at 421 Gateway Drive Northeast.
Move.
Moved by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 22, consider approving the following combination of on sale weekday and Sunday sale and off sale intoxicating liquor license applicant renewal for VFW Post 3817 located at 312 Demers Avenue, East Grand Forks.
Move.
Moved by Grassil.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.